That brings us to our regular meeting of the City of Royal Oak Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. I'd like the members of this party to introduce themselves, starting at my far left.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Ian Vara.
Jim Allison, Mayor.
Clyde Esprit.
Tim Twining, Community Development Director.
Rebecca Black.
A.J. Carter, Student Representative.
Dan Goddick.
Senior Representative.
Thanks for recognizing me.
All right, so the first thing I'm looking for is the approval of the minutes for the August 9, 2016, meeting. Move by Ms. Douglas.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Goddick. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Not seeing any, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Aye. That moves us on to public comment of non-agenda planning and zoning items. If you are here to speak on an item that is on the agenda, I will have a public hearing for each item that comes in front of us, and you will be given an opportunity to speak at that time. If there's anything anybody would like to speak on that is not on the agenda, now is the time for that. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Not seeing anybody, I will go ahead and close that. And that brings us down to our first item of new business, which is Item D1, a public hearing resoning one family residential to PUD and associated final site plan, Site Condominium Plan SP 1609-25, located at 4234 Delamere Boulevard. Mr. Twining.
This item was in front of you at your August meeting for preliminary plan review. The Planning Commission did give direction. What I would point out is the developer has made a couple modifications to it. The number of single-family lots have been reduced from 50 to 49. The width of those interior lots along the south side of the new east-west street was increased from 42 feet to 45 feet in width, and that resulted in the reduction of the one lot. The size of all the other single-family lots have remained the same as proposed in the preliminary plan. The maximum lot coverage proposed by the petitioner for all of the single-family lots, they're proposing it at 40% compared to what was approved as far as the contingencies at the August meeting was 37.5% lot coverage. Basically, what that is, is footprint of the house and the garages would be capped at 37.5% of the lot area. Those are the primary changes from your August meeting to this final site plan.
So just for clarification, the plan in front of us is capped at 37. Or did you say it was capped at 40?
That's our recommendation. They're asking for...
They're asking for 40, you're recommending 37.
Yeah, that was... You're not really approving each individual, single-family home. They're asking to be able to build the house and a garage that covers 40% of the lot. But you're really approving if I... I'll pull it up here in a sec. The single-family home lots are across these two streets. They're depicting buildings on them, but what you're really blessing as part of this approval is the lot width, the lot depth, and the lot area. The lot coverage is simply that it would allow them to put a home on those lots and a garage on those lots, up to 40%. So if the purchaser of the house wanted a two-car garage and a 2,500-square-foot house that covered that much of the lot, they'd be capped at 40%.
I see, okay.
Okay, so it's not... It's a question of what you're going to cap each of these lots at. With that, the contingencies that are listed as part of the PUD and site plan are consistent with last month's or August approval, except for, I guess, the issue of the maximum lot coverage that you want to get to. If you want me to go through that, I'd be happy to, but I'll let the petitioner make their presentation first, and then you can decide.
Any questions for Mr. Twining at this point? Not seeing any? Mr. Clark, I'm assuming you're coming up?
Hello again, Tim Lawford, Robertson Brothers Homes, 6905 Telegraph, Suite 200 in Bloomfield Hills. Thank you. Again, with me tonight is Jim Clark, as always. I'll be brief and to the points. This is the second time we've been in front of you. You know, here tonight, we're discussing the final PUD plan. For the community today, it was preliminary approved on August 9. The staff report describes an issue in regard to the deed restrictions. It's been since resolved after extensive investigation by our corporate counsel and our title company. They reviewed the deed restrictions and agreed to provide full title insurance without exceptions after reviewing prior changes to the plat. So if the attorneys and the title company are happy, Robertson's happy. You will note, as Tim mentioned out, that the plan has stayed relatively the same. Only exception is we did lose one of the lots along the east-west alley-loaded lots, and that brings the minimum lot width for nearly all of the units to 45 feet in width. The overall number of units in the community stands at 122 dwelling units. This is actually three less than what was approved through the RFP process at 125. As brought up in the staff report, Tim had mentioned street lighting. Street lighting and mailbox locations will be shown on the final plans. Our direction's going to be similar to Lexington on the park. Those have the low-profile Koka lights installed by DTE in the single-family section. Then we propose a garage and porch lights for the townhomes. And as far as mailboxes, depending on the postmaster, the homes in the single-family, we would hope to put those on the houses. And then in the townhomes, we would have gang boxes for those. So those will be shown on the final plans. We've asked to clear and grade early and to sell out of an onsite model, which we'll work out those details in the development agreement or with staff. We have spoken to Tim about that. So as he mentioned, one of the last remaining items is the lot coverage for the single-family homes. At the previous meeting, if you recall, we did request up to a 45% lot coverage maximum. Since we've lost that lot... I'm sorry. This would allow a lot of the options that a lot of the buyers have been choosing as far as elevations with porches, two-and-a-half, three-car garages, sunrooms, rear patios. These are popular options that are Lexington-on-the-Park project. Since we've lost that lot, we are requesting a 40% lot coverage maximum rather than the 45% lot coverage maximum. It would permit a majority of the popular options that they have been choosing at Lexington-on-the-Park for most of the lots. We're not going to get every single option bell and whistle on every single lot. We understand that. 40%, I think, would lend itself to a successful project. I do have an exhibit I can pass around if you want to see it. It basically shows the difference between a 40% and a 37.5%. Same lot, same plan, same options. One has a covered porch, which gets it right under 40%. One doesn't, and it's 37.5%. So that really shows the difference. You know, going through this, if we do get the 37.5, you're going to see a lot more of the plans sold without the front porch. So we think it is important... Again, we're not requesting 45% as last time. We're requesting 40%. So I can pass that out if you want to see it or if you want to...
Yeah, please hand it to Mr. Chase in Hill End.
It's actually in your... It's in your packet. It's at the end.
I have not shown this to you. This is actually a graphic exhibit.
All right.
Just what a planner likes, surprises.
It's just one page, right? It's just one page? Yes.
Anything else you want to add? If these fly around the table?
I'll just quickly point out what that is. So on the left side, you have the one I said that includes the porch. This is our Franklin B elevation on the left side, and it just has a more generous porch. Same options on both of them, same lot size on both of them. One on the left is 40%, and one on the right would be 37.5, actually just under on both of those. So we wanted to show a graphic representation of, you know, really the negligible difference between the two. So for this reason, we are proposing the 40%.
Mr. Goddick, yes, sir.
If someone was to try to option one of these models out where they wanted everything you possibly would sell them, how does that cover a particular lot?
So for instance, that's one of the larger lots. You can see if they had every single bell and whistle. That's a two-and-a-half car garage. If they went to a three-car garage, we would not be able to fit that on there. So we have a... And I did bring it last time. I think I did include it with the previous commission meeting. We have this matrix that we go through. It's in the sales office. They'll basically plug in the lot number, plug in the plan that's chosen with the elevation. It has all of the lot coverage for that, and then any options. If it basically spits out over 40%, we would say you can't choose those options. So we do kind of limit it in the sales office so they don't, you know, get down...
So lot by lot, you'd be limiting to 40% or less?
I'm sorry?
Lot by lot, you would be limiting to 40%?
Exactly. 40% would be the max.
So I couldn't get the front porch and the two, three-car garage?
Yes, in that example, they would not be able to get a three-car and a front porch and a sunroom.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chase?
I'm assuming the corner lot zoning variance or setbacks are adjusted for these couple of corner lots for like a wraparound porch and everything like that. Those are current variants, and I'm not sure how they will actually lay out, but I know that we've had trouble in the past getting wraparound porches or things like that.
But one of the items previously discussed at the last meeting was having a... On the sides, you're going to have a 10-foot setback rather than the 25-foot setback. So it's already been addressed as part of your preliminary PUD address, so...
So they could...
It's already covered, yes.
That's nice.
All right. Any other questions? You're all set? Okay, excellent. Then what I will do at this point in time is open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to address the Planning Commission on this item, now is the time. Wait to be recognized by the Chair. You have three minutes, and please introduce yourself for the record. Who would like to go first? Yes, sir. Sorry about that little spiel. I saw your hand go up like three times.
Evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pat McGee. I live at 4524 Elmhurst, Royal Oak, just one block north of the proposed development. I'm coming here to speak to you on behalf of myself. What the Robinson Brothers has proposed is a fantastic development. However, what I would like to remind the Commission is the current neighborhood has relatively... I did some quick calculations. A square foot per unit, per property of around 4,784 square feet per unit of house in the current block of that area. What the Robinson Brothers have proposed would take that new neighborhood down to 3,248 square feet per unit. So it would be a much more densely packed area, and that includes both the single-family houses and the multifamily houses. In contrast to their Lexington development, which was 8,911 square feet per unit as planned. So my question is why the departure from what they had previously done at Lexington? And then some other quick items I had. With the proposed construction, they all appeared to be stick construction with very little brick construction or variability from what their standard model is on their websites. There's very little creativity that the new homeowners would have to express their individualism. All houses would be relatively the same with odds and ends. Could you imagine if you went to a car dealership and you got to pick the car with your bells and whistles, whether you want chrome, sport, big tires, little tires? But the make and model of your car, you didn't get to pick? That's so much fun. And then also with the 20-by-20-foot garage that's being proposed, if anybody knows what the most popular vehicle on the road today is, will know that vehicle will not fit in that garage, which is an F-150 crew cab long box that is the best-selling vehicle in the United States to date. And that has a wheelbase length of over 240 inches. With the trailer hitch attached, you're over that. So you'd put your trailer hitch through the garage on a 20-by-20 garage. And I know that because it's been done. And lastly, a side note is a lot of the easements they have for the garages would not accommodate the infrastructure needed for your Chevy Volt or your Chevy Bolt... Your Chevy Bolt, your Chevy Bolt, and the Ford C-Max. The plug-in requires a 240 for a quick charge, and the amount of easement needed for a 240 box with the three-foot easements that's being proposed would not be enough space. So these are my concerns. I think the development is a great idea, but I would like the development to be in line with what the current neighborhood is currently established there is. And more trees per house, one tree per house, I think is rather chimsy. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Dale Moore, and I live at 4608 Elmhurst. I live just about a block and two houses from the park that's being proposed. Mine, I don't have quite the detailed thought that he has on that. I have something that kind of... I like details, and I have a question, I guess, more than anything else. As I'm looking at this memorandum, and in it, it says that it's going to be approximately 11.496 acres. And I guess my question is, is that when it went to the voters and all the discussion I seen in the paperwork, in the internet net for Royal Oak, it says up to 10 acres, a fifth of the park, and I see 10 acres. Now we're talking an extra acre and a half being taken away from there?
I can address that.
Am I reading it correctly?
This came up last month, so let the Mayor address this for you, and you all understand.
The 11-point-something acres includes the public streets that aren't part of the 10 acres. So they're developing on 10 acres, and we've got public streets going in there and the other 1-point-something.
Okay. That was just a question I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Comtis. I live at 4127 Elmhurst, right across from the Normandy Oaks property. And, you know, while we're a little disappointed in that, the fact that the development had been moved from where it was supposed to be along Delamere over to the south side of the park there, we're okay with most of what we see. My wife and I met with the Robertson people a few months back, and I guess I'd just like to reiterate a few concerns that we have. One was the lighting. We'd like to see the newer, low-profile, shielded LED lights, for instance, like they have in the parking lot at the senior center, or they have at the parking lot at the Beaumont Health Center over there. They're very, you know, they're very pleasant, and we definitely do not want to see any sodium lighting. That's really our concern, is that we've kept that neighborhood pretty much free of sodium light, and we'd like to keep it that way. And if they, you know, make sure that the lighting is, you know, people-friendly and not that nasty sodium, if possible. And also, you know, there's a few trees around... Some of the trees around the periphery of the development, we've noticed are marked for removal, and some of those trees, I just really can't... They seem to be way out from where the development is, and I have a question about that. I'm not sure about it, but I just wanted to bring that up because I think some of those trees probably don't need to be taken out. That's one thing about the whole park development is to preserve as many trees there as we possibly can because there's really nice, mature trees in that park. And, you know, we just wanted to remind about that. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Anybody else? I see a hand on the aisle. Yes, sir.
Tim Craddock, 2026, Massoid, the last 43 years. We're not upset about what's going to happen, but we do have some concerns. First of all, are we going to start a precedent by going with 40-foot lots? When I bought this house that we're in 43 years ago, it was standard. That whole neighborhood is 60-foot and plus. And here we are, we're going to stuff 50, 49 houses and 78 townhouses into 11 acres, whereas it just concerns us on how you're going to control everything that's there. And I'd hate to see a precedent started that we're going to take Royal Oak in this downside. And I just want you all to think about it before you make your minds up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table. Mr. Mayor, I saw you taking feverish notes over there.
The garage size, is it 20-by-20 or 22-by-22? I thought it was 22-by-22.
I believe it is 20-by-20. We have a 22-by-22 option. I think the 22 is actually the two-and-a-half. It's a little bit deeper, so it may be actually 20-by-20. We'll check the plans.
Well, that's two...
Yeah, that's the two-and-a-half car garage option.
Again, what I'll point out is the plan that you've submitted for each lot that's on the screen. I just want to be clear for everybody. Well, it depicts a house and a garage. They're not required to build it in this fashion. Again, we're only blessing the lot sizes and the lot depths and the lot width. That's where you're going to get into your issue of... The person that's buying it is going to decide whether they're going to have a three-car garage or a two-car garage. You're not limiting them to a 20-by-20 garage by approving this plan.
They're custom fitting their own lot.
Custom fitting, yeah. They can have a 20-by-20 if that fits their needs. But it all... In the end, it all goes against that total percentage of lot coverage.
Correct. So you're not blessing a home plan on this configuration. It'd be better if it just showed the lot here or the lots.
A standard garage is 20-by-20 for us. You know, we'll do a custom price request if somebody has an F-150 with a crew cab. We just handled that on a one-off basis, as long as it was within the 40 feet. The issue of the "we can't accommodate plug-in cars," we're going to be required to run all our transformers and electric in the front of the houses, and we would do direct burial to the garage and accommodate that. It would not be in the three-foot easement. So we know we can because we have, and we would do it in that fashion as opposed to putting it in the backyard. We won't be allowed to run conduit in the backyards in that three-foot setback, so they'll be coming down the driveway.
Is that something that'll be offered as an option, or is it now becoming standard that you've got to put...
It'd be an option.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Clark, before you walk away?
Before you walk away, Jim. A question was raised about the shielded lighting, LEDs versus sodium?
We will work with Matt. We would certainly like to shield... I think the townhouses themselves are going to shield a lot of the lighting, and we're proposing just garage lights and coach lights on the front and lights in the back in the garage. And no, if we did any internal lighting in the park areas in the townhouses, it would be low, and we'd be... We want to shield them. People want to go to bed. They don't want lights.
Understood. The neighbor's concern is we're trying to get away from the sodiums and...
We won't have sodiums.
Okay.
We don't want them either.
Yeah, I would point you to Item G under your contingencies.
Which says we got to give you a lighting plan.
Which says you got to have a lighting plan and comply.
Oh, I understand that.
But the difference is there is no requirement for LEDs, so if you want LEDs, you should add it.
That's why I'm asking the question, because it was raised in public comments, so let's get a...
That is what we did at Lexington. LED lights.
Okay.
So...
Did I see a hand? Mr. Goddick?
The reason why I would... I think Mr. Chase brought it up. If I was to buy into this, buy one of these properties, a corner lot would be ideal because we can push that closer to the street and get a bigger backyard. Is that typical with these developments, that a corner lot, you can have a 10-foot setback on any of the corner lots, allowing that structure to stay closer to the street? Is that why, Mr. Chase, you were asking that question?
No, it's for different reasons, but that's okay.
Is that true, when... In the corner lots in this development, that the setback's only 10-foot?
It will be in this development.
Okay. And that allow me to move the structure in my options so that I can have a bigger backyard?
Can I answer that one? So I think our minimum corner lot is 50-foot. I think some of them are 55, and I think there might be one at 58. So our biggest product is 30-foot wide, and if you have a five-foot setback on the one, so you've got your 35 feet basically within another 15-foot minimum on the corner. So your corner lots will be realistically 15.
Plus the right-of-way, the number 11.
Correct. And then there's obviously the right-of-way landscaping in between that.
I'm going to point you to contingency number two that says a minimum setback at 10 feet shall be permitted on the side street for the single-family dwellings. And it identifies the lots, lots 1, 13, 34, and 35. Those are your corner lots, I believe. So you'll have a 10-foot setback on the side street.
And I think the only other concern that I heard out of the audience, and Mr. Mayor, I'm going to put you on the hot seat. Can you speak briefly to the process that the city commission went through as they bid to buy this property and what they were allowed to... How they were allowed to bid and why the density is being proposed as it is?
Yeah, when we put it out to... We put it out to bid, we let the... As part of the RFP, we let them know that we wanted to go with a PUD, which is a Planned Urban Development, which allows the developer to come in and convince us on a single plan as opposed to every individual lot. It allows them flexibility. It allows the city flexibility to get a design that works. In order for a developer to have a successful project for themselves, they need to be able to get a certain return on investment. And so that would be the size of lots and the types of houses and the density. So we let them know that the city would be open for discussions on increased density because what we asked for was a combination of multifamily and single-family, which is what we have here. And in order to do that, we had to accept that the density would probably be larger than what we're used to seeing. But again, this is a development that is set by itself. It's not part of another neighborhood. It's across the street from the neighborhood. It's across the street from industrial, and it's backing into a park that cannot be expanded anymore because the voters only allowed us the 10 acres, and that's what we've got. So this is a development that is living by itself. And so there's not a concern of additions onto this development of similar-type construction or anything of that nature. This was... This RFP process was designed specifically to attract the type of development that we have here. And we had a number of respondents on the RFP, and except for some minor changes, they were all basically addressed the same thing. One of the questions about why did we move the property along... It used to be along Delamere, and now we've lumped the 10 acres in the corner. That had a lot to do with traffic. We were creating a... Putting single-family homes along north-south over to Dakota was kind of breaking up the property in the sense that it wasn't a community. And what we've ended up here now is a community. The rectangle we've got, the rectangular 10 acres, is much more conducive to bringing it within an enclave, if you will, rather than having it go all the way from Normandy to Dakota as a cut-through and stuff like that. So the intent was to keep it as its own community, something that's going to be self-sustaining, and that's what we've got. That's why we're at... So the Planned Urban Development, the increased density, the flexibility on design was all part of the original request from the city on the RFP.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Did I see your hand, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have to apologize. I was not here last month, so I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know if they were addressed. Maybe you can help me answer these questions. Number one has to do with accessibility, two-way accessibility. Was it discussed last month about if the people who live here will be able to walk out their backyards and get into the park? Was there any discussion that there would be any kind of barrier or...
Well, right here. Well, yeah, the ability, we don't know if it's going to be fenced or not fenced or how, but... Well, yeah, the ability, we don't know if it's gonna be fenced or not fenced or how, but certainly the intent was always to have this neighborhood have access to the park.
From the road, but now from each?
No, now, well, I guess it depends on who's put it, how the park is gonna be...
Developed.
Developed. Because we haven't got that answer yet.
Okay.
That answer could be different if they ultimately do go with a partnership with the county.
Okay.
They may have some fence restrictions, but we don't know that. But I think, in general, I think these are all set up that unless there's some other restriction, they would all have access to the park.
Okay. And my second question has to do with stormwater. And was that discussed at all last month? And if so...
Yeah, it was discussed, and that was also included as part of the RFP. We let the respondents know that the city would be willing to consider putting the water retention into the park area since we were assuming that we were gonna have water features and ponds in there anyways.
Okay.
And we already had two retention ponds in the park, so I think the overall plan is gonna include expansion or reworking of one of those retention ponds that we already have in there to accommodate this.
Okay. Then as a request or a thought, I would like, and I appreciate that, I had heard whispers of green infrastructure and stormwater containment, which I think is a great idea, but I don't think we should let the developer off the hook in responsibility of trying to make as much zero runoff on this subdivision as possible. And I just wanted to make that comment for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
I just have one question. Mr. Clark, are you anticipating Detroit Edison going overhead or are you going under? There's a big push to go underground for everything now, so are, is everything gonna go underground or there won't be any overhead vines, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I like that.
Need to hear you, Jim.
There's a fairly substantial line just north of the existing starter shack. We have not met with Detroit Edison yet, so I don't know what the, what their relocation requirements are gonna be. It's off of our property, but it's got a lot of wire on it, so we would drop down and go underground through the whole site.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question, 'cause I know it was mentioned in the public comment, and I don't know if this is the right place to address it, but the trees, like, is the trees a part of the plan in here? Or like, I know it's like a very dense development, but I don't know, is there plans to have trees in front of a couple houses, or is that not really planning commissions?
Yeah, no, they have a complete landscape plan they're gonna have to submit as well as comply with other design standards. I think the question at public comment was potentially saving some of the trees that exist, and that's not part of the current plan, as I understand it.
Trees that are marked, I mean, to be perfectly frank, I don't know if they're marked just because they're in the way of a potential development or if they're diseased, perhaps you know?
Yeah, we were just talking about that. That's probably from the tree inventory, you know, when we did the original topo on this. So that's the assumption on that. As far as the trees being planted, yes, it would be one per unit in the front at a minimum. The homeowners would be responsible for their landscaping on the single-family, so we don't have a plan for that. This is not the most flattering plan to show you, but we do have a landscape plan that, you know, in the townhome section, similar to our Sherman Oaks development, has quite a bit of trees and other landscaping.
Has there been any discussion of trying to save, if a tree lies in a spot that is open, has there been a discussion if the tree is valuable enough, try saving it?
Sure, we've done it before. I can think of one in Canton that we have right now, and we did that specific thing. So we did develop around it, so we will take, we will certainly take a look at that.
That's something you can commit to as part of this?
Yes.
I'm not asking to jump through hoops, but if it lays out, you've got a nice tree, you know, especially if it falls in your courtyard or something.
Yeah, we'll commit to taking a look at that, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions or...
Okay, Tim, what are we looking at on this one? This is a... It's a single motion with the contingencies listed. As discussed earlier, item B4 is in regards to the maximum lot coverage percentage. Staff's report includes what was basically a contingency from the August meeting. If you want to change that, that's the only item, I believe, you'd have to...
Staff has a thirty-seven point five in their request, two forty, just so I'm clear?
That's correct. And thirty, and thirty-seven came from discussions last month, correct? Well, thirty-seven came from a review that staff did that felt that, given the lot sizes and the options they had, that was sufficient to get the majority of the lots in compliance with that percentage. I'm, I'm gonna offer the motion, and I'm gonna, in my motion, include the forty percent. I mean, they did ask for forty-five last time, and we cut that down. But one of the things that they also did that we haven't talked about, we was mentioned, but along the row of houses on the northeast, east-west bank that banks up to the alley, those lots were, majority of them were forty-two foot, and the suggestion was made to, if you eliminate one house in that area, then all your lots would work out to forty-five. That's what they did. They eliminated one of the properties. We now have consistent forty-five foot lot widths, which is the minimum that we usually try to get away with here, which there are no forty-foot lots on this property that I'm aware of, no. I think forty-five is your minimum at this point?
There's a couple of forty-two.
Four, a couple of forty-two's left, okay.
They are, right, they are deeper.
Okay. So, yeah, that's kind of my logic, to work back and forth with the developer and give them the forty-foot coverage so that people can have the amenities that they want, bigger porches, bigger garages, that kind of stuff. So that's my motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Ellison. We are gonna be modifying item B4 to upward to forty percent from the staff recommendation of thirty-seven point five. Is there support, Ms. Douglas? Any additional discussion on this motion? All right, not seeing any. I'm still where I was at last month. I realize I'm gonna lose this vote again, and that's okay, but I still fundamentally feel that there should be driveways feeding the street that's gonna be built. I fully understand that I probably won't be getting any support on that, but such is life, I guess. So with that being said, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night, thanks.
That moves us along to our next item of new business, which is item number D2, a site plan, SP 160923, to construct a second-story addition to a professional office building, the Supporin and Associates Building located at 26026 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twink.
This site is on the north side, or on the northbound side of Woodward. As you indicated, they are proposing to construct a second store to the existing office, second story to the existing office building, along with some other minor site modifications to address some items brought up by staff. Basically, the addition will result in a building that's about seventy-eight hundred square feet gross floor area with a usable roughly sixty-four hundred. The way it's proposed, the first contingency that we've listed, I'm gonna zoom in a little. The dimensional requirements for ninety-degree parking are to have a twenty-foot aisle or twenty-foot parking space in terms of depth or length by nine feet. And for that type of ninety-degree parking, the aisleway or maneuvering lane also needs to be twenty feet. What's indicated on the plan is it's thirty-two point, thirty-five point two feet, so it's short. So our first contingency was to, regarding the zoning board of appeals granting any necessary variances regarding that maneuvering aisle. One of the other options that we had talked about was changing it to angle parking as a one-way. They may lose one spot in that regard, and then that would put them under the, meeting the minimum requirement for parking. So depending on where that ends up would be at least a zoning board action potential. The second item is in regards to landscaping and screening, and whether the planning commission wants to require landscaping or screening along or between Henry Boulevard and the parking area. I would point out, it's an existing parking area, but there is an ordinance provision for you to look at that and determine whether you want to add any additional, basically in this area. The remaining contingencies are standard contingencies regarding lighting signage and other code requirements.
Any questions for Mr. Twink at this point? Well, I see the petition is ready to roll, so please introduce yourself, sir, and tell us what your plan is.
I'm sort of going with design build alternatives. I'm responsible for the original design of the existing building that was renovated a number of years ago, and also for the new design and the management of the current proposal. To give a little perspective to this project, Supporin Associates, the business that's currently in there, provides guardian and care manager of severely disabled individuals, and they've been doing this for the last eleven and a half years. In 2012, they purchased what was then a vacant and deteriorated building, and after considerable planning work and investment, they completely renovated it inside and out. And then they moved in 2013 from their rented space across the street into this new building. The business has grown, additional space is required, and that's what prompted the second-story proposal. And again, they've put considerable time in the planning investment. The proposal's for a partial second-floor addition. The building sits on an unusual triangular lot. It faces Woodward, and the existing parking is on the Hendry side. The proposed second floor essentially does not change the existing footprint or the available parking spaces. The design was a serious attempt to minimize the mass of the building and be respectful of the adjacent buildings, the neighborhood, and the environment around it. As proposed, the proposal meets all the requirements for stormwater retention, paving setbacks, and the building codes. So that brings us to the real issue here, which is parking, which is the configuration and available space. The entire design of the project in the second floor was driven by the zoning calculation where you have to have one parking space for every two-hundred-and-twenty-five usable square feet in the building. And other than storage and bathrooms, there isn't any particular consideration to the actual usage of the space. And with respect to that, this proposed second-floor size was reduced from what was desired in an attempt to conform to the requirement. Because of the unique and limiting triangular shape of the lot, there's not very many options. The Supporin Associates staff consists of two parts. There's an office staff and a field staff, and in general, it's split fifty-fifty between the two. The field staff works mostly from home and visits clients throughout the state during the day. And as a result, half of the parking lot is vacant on a daily basis during regular work hours. In addition to that, in their business, there are a lot of new government requirements for retention of legal and medical documents, which now requires significant new storage space, in fact, doubled over the last couple of years. So the plan is to move some of these existing staff upstairs into the new second floor and reconfigure. Currently, the parking is adjacent to the building and the rear lot line. It's adequate now, and actually, for their purposes, without changing anything, would be adequate with the proposed second floor. So specific to the requirements, once you get beyond the number of parking spaces, the zoning ordinance has a couple additional requirements that affect all this. The submitted parking plan, which was at ninety degrees, is, even with that, is still one place short of the calculated requirements. It's not the best or the most practical parking configuration, but it comes closest to conforming. The submitted plan does include parking curbs as required, and that's along the Hendry side where the sidewalk is. There are two other components in the ordinance that come into play. The first is the maneuvering aisle. The maneuvering aisle is the space between where cars park, and in this case, the building where cars would come in and out from the street and maneuver into the individual parking spaces. And the code requires a forty-foot dimension. We know that that doesn't even exist now, and there's only between thirty-two and thirty-three feet available. And with that, it's doable, but it's tight. So just to make that work requires a variance. The second ordinance issue is the landscaping and screening. And when you go through the section 77090, this gets to the area along the Hendry side of the existing parking lot, where it butts right up to the existing sidewalk. To conform, it requires a visual landscape screen, a thirty-inch landscape buffer, and a three-foot tall masonry wall, or any combination of these elements. Any of these things, the dimension of which would then have to be subtracted from the aisle passageway because they're limited by where the building is, there's no place to go. And on the other side, it's the sidewalk. So what that means is if, at a minimum, if there's any requirement for screening, it's gonna reduce the maneuvering aisle to twelve feet or less, which is just impractical, it just doesn't work. So there are, from our perspective, there, excuse me, there are two possible conclusions. Keeping in mind that everything else about the project conforms to all the codes and ordinance except for the parking, the submitted plan provides the greatest number of possible spaces, but even to make that work, a variance is required to reduce the number of spaces down to twenty-eight rather than the twenty-nine. It would also, also requires a variance of a maneuvering aisle to go from twenty to fifteen. And in talking with the, the planning and in the report that suggested, those seem to be feasible. The problem is the space for the landscaping and the screening requirements, no matter what you do, if you do anything, virtually makes the parking lot unusable. So to make the whole thing work, we would need a waiver of the landscaping and screening requirements. Alternatively, when you look at really what we're talking, three things to show you. The existing is in the, is in the, in the plan, I don't know if you can see these things from where you are, but basically, this is Woodward, the building faces Woodward, this is Hendry. Right now, the parking goes along here. We have twenty-six spaces right now without doing anything, and obviously, it works. The proposal to get the maximum amount of parking spaces, ninety percent, requires moving the parking right up to the sidewalk on the Hendry side, and also requires reducing the aisleway down to fifteen feet.
You know, before you go any further, reach behind and pull the microphone sort of in that direction. How many people are here as well?
Better?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Now, we put a lot of research into this, trying to figure out how to extract the maximum parking spaces. And the people in planning, they suggested in their first review that we angled the spaces, and at that point, there weren't any particular calculations as to what that would mean. This is what happens if we angle. That gets us twenty-six spaces, no more than what we have now. So we haven't gained anything, but we put the cars towards the sidewalk, and it was obviously at the expense of the reconfiguration. So here's a comparison between the ninety and the angle. So if we were to go that direction, we haven't gained anything. So the alternative to the miscellaneous variances that we're looking for would be, would be to just leave it alone, just as is.
Mr. Twink, does putting the parking at the angled configuration that you just showed us eliminate the need for a, the variance for maneuverability?
Yeah, but he's correct. It creates a problem where you need the variance for the number of parking spaces.
Right, right. So I see it's sort of damned if you do, damned if you don't.
It's a choice of which.
You go either direction, neither of them are good. We don't have a problem now. The Supporins aren't gonna have a problem with the addition. So that would be our request.
If we do nothing, then they need a bigger variance because they're adding parking because they're adding space. Is that true? Is that true? Is that the way this is working?
No. We're not, we, I'm sorry.
The fact that they need a variance is because the second floor is being added.
That's right. So we're adding branding space, and the addition of the space is creating the requirement for more parking.
Right.
And if we do nothing, then we're short even more parking.
Well, the variance issue isn't up to the planning commission.
I know.
But in the petition.
We just have permission to go forward.
No, this isn't a special land use. I think they just came to you to get the site plan either approved or blessed. The real issue that I think is pertinent tonight is whether you're going to require landscaping or a screening wall between the parking lot and Hendry Boulevard, and whether or not you have a feeling of whether 90-degree parking on a site plan is better than angled parking. The variance requests would be modified based on what you tell them to do with the site plan. So if they, if you require a screen wall and some landscaping in there, then either the dimensional requirement gets bigger for variance or something. So you're going to impact the, that they may, they need, they're going to need a variance to put the second floor on.
May I comment?
Yeah, please do, sir.
The crux of the issue, everything that you just said is absolutely true, but the crux of the issue is that if you require screening, that gets subtracted, it doesn't matter whether it's 90 degrees or angled, that dimension, which could be from 3 to as much as 10 feet, gets subtracted from the available parking space, specifically the aisle way, and cars can't get through. That makes it an impossibility. It's just not possible.
Where are you coming up with 3 feet to 10 feet for screening versus like a four-inch-wide masonry wall, for example?
If you take this, the parking lot right now, parking lot right now comes right up here's Hendry, here's the sidewalk.
Right.
Parking lot comes right up to it. Okay? So to keep cars from overhanging, you put a curb, which is a couple feet back, that's part of the plan. Okay? Then, I've got the road real close. The road already five feet narrower, doing nothing between here and the building. Okay? So building's not going to move. So anything that's required here, you further subtract from the five feet that were already short. And the dimension that we have, based on this, is already marginal. So if you look at the different possibilities and you say, okay, let's just build a masonry wall, that's going to take up a foot by the time you do the footing and you build the wall. At a minimum, more likely by the time you're done, you're probably at a foot and a half to two feet. You have to subtract that then from the available space of the aisle. So now you're down to 12 feet or so, or more. 12 feet just doesn't work.
Very good.
So, and to address the comment earlier about the number of spaces, the second floor requires a variance in the number of spaces. There's no disputing that. And that, that number is 29, okay? When you just do the straight calculation. The concept at the 90-degree with nothing else happening, we can get 28. So we, we're looking at that because it gets closest to. But then, when you look at all the other requirements that you've got to do, the screening, it essentially kills the practicality of that plan. So then you step back from that concept and you say, okay, we'll angle the spaces to make it better. We've got the exact same spaces as a result of that as what we have now. We haven't gained anything, and in fact, we've made it less safe.
Any questions for the petitioner at this point? Place your hand.
I have a question for Tim. If we, you said this is a straight site plan, and then they decide which variances they want to go for, correct?
Well, no, the, depending on what you decide on the screening issue, the landscape issue, it will impact the variance request. If you require that there be a wall, or if you require that there be a screen, and it does eat up two feet of the property or three feet of the property, their option is, the petitioner will either be to still propose 90-degree, and the dimensional requirement will be different. It is possible that you could do, or you could do angle parking and get down to a 12-foot-wide driveway, but that's going to, you're going to lose.
Parking spaces.
Parking spaces, and so their parking variance would go from one to potentially three. So that's what's going to impact the variances based on what you do this evening.
Ms. Douglas, then the mayor.
So, I'm sorry, I haven't written these numbers down. Currently, they have how many parking spaces?
26.
26. And the zone, then they're required to have, they would be required to have 29?
Under the proposed second floor addition.
Okay.
And they're proposing 28.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
What's there right now as far as screening along Hendry? Is there anything?
None, there has, there never has been.
There's nothing there right now. And the sidewalk comes right up to the property line, the public sidewalk comes right up to the property line, and then there's a right-of-way between the sidewalk and the curb, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And the purpose of the screening wall is multiple reasons, but one of the most important is, at night, to screen headlights from intruding across the street. Tim, is it possible for us to work with the petitioner on a licensing agreement to allow them to put some shrubbery on the right-of-way to screen the lights, and they can get away with putting the wall in? And not having to put the wall in, and we still screen the headlights?
On the east side of the sidewalk?
Yeah, I'm thinking on, just on the east side of the sidewalk, a row of some kind of shrubbery that comes up 30 inches high or something, and then that would accomplish the headlight screening and give them the space that they're going to be losing if we require them to make a wall. Do you understand what I'm?
I understand completely, but my response to that is, right now, the cars park towards the building. There is no headlight issue whatsoever. There just isn't an issue. There are no problems.
Okay.
So to go through the gyrations and the expense to turn the parking around, rebuild everything, whether you put screening on the public property, which raises, I would think, all kinds of issues, why go through all this?
We're just, we're brainstorming here.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the motivation, but.
Let me ask you this. Does the business operate at night?
No.
No, so there's no, should be no traffic in there?
Well, actually, Stephen, Karen, Support, let me answer those questions.
Good evening. Typically, no, we don't operate at night.
Can I just have you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, Steve Support. And the address is 26026 Woodward.
Thank you.
Sorry for that. Typically, we don't operate at night. Once in a great while, because these are disabled people, I may get a call at 2 o'clock in the morning. Nine times out of 10, I can get into the computer at my house and do everything from the house, but once in a while, I'll have to come into the office and pull a hard copy for a hospital or something. But it's very rare, and so that should not be a problem for us.
So just to clarify, everything that happens in this office is administrative? There's no patient care?
No. Partially because the people are severely disabled, partially because some of them are criminally bad.
And I understand, I'm simply asking the question so we know what we're dealing with.
No, they don't come to our office.
We're dealing with the people that work for your company doing administrative work in your building.
Exactly, yes.
That's what we're dealing with. Okay. And how many spaces, if we do nothing, as you suggested, how many? There's 26 spaces, and what you're required to get is 29. Yeah, and we're not going to decide the variance on the parking anyways. I mean, it's a case of giving them permission to go to the ZBA.
Well, and again, you're going to impact the variance based on what you decide to do with the site plan. I mean, you could require that the parking remain against the building and reduce the number of available spots from 28 to 26, and it'd need a three-space waiver rather than a one.
Yeah.
You could do that to mitigate the headlight issue. You could make them flip it.
I understand, and that's where I'm going. I mean, it's, trying to get a feel for the petitioner, what you'd rather pursue, a variance on three spaces and leave the parking where it's at with no wall?
Yes.
Or a variance on one or two spaces with the requirement to put the wall in, or the eyebrow, you know, you put the shrubbery along the right-of-way?
The parking towards the building as is without screening. No problems?
Yeah, again.
And the difference, and ultimately, the difference between getting a variance for three spaces versus one or, you know.
It's insignificant.
Yeah.
Why do you think?
And I agree, I agree with your logic. You still got to go in front of the ZBA to get this anyway.
But the decision here about the screening forces.
I understand, I understand. We can make the decision here that allows you to go to the ZBA and ask for a variance of three, or we can make a decision here that allows you to go to the ZBA, ask for a variance of two. So it's going to boil down to how, you know, we can approve the site plan with the parking remaining as it is, and you go to ZBA, and you've got to make your case to them. And then, okay, and so, I mean, that's the only issue we're dealing with, Tim, here, is the configuration of the parking.
Let me go down to Ms. Douglas, she's been patiently waiting.
Well, actually, I think what I was going to say was already covered, that, I mean, right now, people, the headlights shine onto the building. I mean, and in other circumstances, we have a consideration about, problems on a spot not being of the owner's making. And I think this is one of those cases where they've been there for, you know, X number of years without a screening wall, and they might have had to cope with it, whatever, whenever the building was built 40 years ago. And I just, I mean, I think it's onerous for us to ask for that screening wall, given the, I mean, rock and a hard place that they're between here along the backside of that building.
The building's been this way for 50 years plus.
Will somebody prepare to take action?
Do we have a public hearing?
Public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's just public comment, not.
I got ahead of myself. Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to take a seat real quickly so I can open up the public hearing. Public comment, excuse me. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this matter? I see a hand right there. Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Overly. I live at 729 Hendry, which is directly across the street from this place. Now, I'd like to address the question of the berm, the parking berm. Just because a company comes and buys an irregularly shaped lot and resides there for a time, why does that give them the ability to not have to have the berm if it's required by ordinance? Why?
What berm are you talking about?
The berm that blocks the headlights.
The wall, okay, okay. It's not a berm, it's a wall, okay.
Second question I'd like to ask about the snow removal. Because right now, they plow their snow across their parking lot, down the parking apron, onto the grass of the people that live across the street. And I've called two years in a row and asked them, your snow removal people is gouging your asphalt driveway apron so that I have to deal with asphalt in my grass every spring? Ask them, could you like not do that? The answer was, sure, we'll talk to them. Right. Didn't happen, two years in a row. I don't want to look at headlights. The contention that only 50% of the people are there during the day, not true as far as I'm concerned. I've seen many, many days where there's 13, 14, 15 cars in the parking lot most of the Do they operate at night? No. But, you know, the sun sets earlier in the winter, and when they get out, there's going to be headlights. The trend these days is to get out of your car and walk away and leave the headlights on because they'll shut themselves off. Well, whoever has to look at those headlights has to look at those headlights for, I don't know, two, three, four minutes maybe before those lights shut off? So, those are my concerns.
Let me ask, in the current configuration, with the cars nosing into the building, do you have a problem with the headlights in its current configuration?
Not a problem.
Okay.
Another thing is building lighting. Right now, they have building lights that are above 45-degree downsloping awnings. So the lights come on, the light comes down, hits the 45-degree awning, straight across the street. So I don't know why they would want to do that, because it doesn't light anything underneath the awning, but still, it's a nuisance. I can say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to this side of the table. Did I see a comment over here? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, if anybody wants to.
I don't want to do all of it.
Ms. Robb?
Oh, attempt a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
So, let's see here. We're going to, my motion is to approve the site plan to construct a second story to existing professional office building with no change in the parking configuration. Do I, Tim, do I need to base this on the seven points that you have here in the staff report?
I would take, I would leave number one as a zoning board, the zoning board of appeals granting all necessary variances and stop there.
Okay, based on number one, on the staff report.
And then number two, I would eliminate because you're not going to require screening and replace it with your leaving the parking configuration as is.
Okay.
And then the rest would be standard contingencies.
Okay, so deleting number two, keeping the parking configuration remaining as is. That's my motion.
Motion by Ms. Robb, supported by Mr. Goddard. Would anybody like to comment on this motion? Not seeing any, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good.
I like, I like the looks of the building. I really like that deck. It's really nice.
It is nice.
Move the overhead light. Okay, before we move on to item D3, Mayor Ellison.
Yeah, I, item D3, I need to recuse myself from discussion on this particular site plan, so I'll remove myself from the table.
Does your golf, or?
No.
It doesn't golf well, I've seen him golf.
No, I, no, it's not because I don't golf, no. I did this job two years ago, so.
Okay. So we have Mayor Ellison recusing himself on item D3, which is the site plan 160924 to renovate an outdoor recreation center, the Royal Oak Golf Center, located at 3430 through 3500 Edgar Avenue. Mr. Twing.
Pull up what I want to get to here real quick. I think everyone's probably familiar with the driving range on Edgar as well as the miniature golf course. This is a proposal to modify and make improvements to that facility. They are proposing to expand the number of covered tees from the current, I believe, 10 to some number, and that's depicted in the gray along the site plan I have on the screen. They're also proposing to tear down the existing mini-golf and adjacent storage building and replace it with a new building in this area of approximately 2,100 square feet, as well as install a kind of a covered patio pavilion in this area that's indicated in gray, a little over 1,300 square feet. And then there would be an additional covered storage area just north of the clubhouse. And then, there would be an additional covered storage area just north of the clubhouse. And based on my calculation, that's about 1,400 square feet. You should have copies of the actual floor plans in the packet detailing those additions, as well as some of the elevations of those buildings. There are no specific parking requirements or ordinance for recreational centers such as this, but, so we didn't evaluate it. It relies on all the public lots around it anyway, so with that, I guess I'll stop. And the petitioner's here and wants to add more detail, I'll let them...
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Twing at this point? Not seeing any, are the petitioners present? Please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, tell us about your plan.
Good evening, my name's Lauren, I work for Creaker Cloud Architects. We are working on renovating the golf center, as you heard. We have kind of a couple of different notes. Importance level to the golf club, it would be the expansion of the covered tees is number one, so they would like to do that one. The number of it is kind of being worked on with the budget, so we're hoping to get, we're hoping to maximize that, but we're working within the budget. The number two item that they would like to address is the miniature golf, excuse me, miniature golf area. With that existing conditions right now, they have storage there for some of their M.O. equipment, and then where they have their utilities, and then also the miniature golf building itself, where they have, you know, small snacks and where you get your clubs and that kind of thing. With those buildings being renovated, we're proposing to move some of that M.O. equipment over to the north end, so that would be why we're proposing to add a covered area to the north. So, it is open to the elements on three sides, it's just the covering that they would need for a lot of their equipment, the larger items. And then, let's see, what else was there? The miniature golf area has the pavilion to the south, or, I'm sorry, to the east. That would be one of the first things that you would see when you come up the drive there and what you would walk up to from the parking lot. That is what they would propose, to have amenities under birthday parties, those kind of events would be hosted underneath that pavilion. You would walk into the miniature golf area and then out to the south, underneath a designated trellis underneath there, where people would have picnic tables and that kind of thing. So, the idea is to design this new facility so that, there's a couple of different areas they're trying to designate, the sort of kid-free zone, although obviously, kids are gonna be able to do the, I'm sorry, driving range. But during the times of birthday parties and that kind of stuff, they're trying to designate those areas a little bit better. Let's see, as I said before, we're working through budget, so one of the major things that we've been kind of going through is the transformer location. I think on the site plan, as it's being shown, we're actually moving it closer to the street to try and open up some space. However, budget might not allow us to do that. So, as part of us coming to you for site plan approval is, we just want to bring into attention that we might have to adjust the size of the building slightly to accommodate the, keeping the transformer location where it's at. So, the overall design, the overall site plan, the elements where we're proposing them, would all be as we're proposing it, but we might just have to modify that building slightly in overall size to accommodate the existing transformer location. I think that pretty much sums it up. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the petitioner? I guess not.
Okay.
Then, let me do this, since you're done with your presentation, let me open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Not seeing any hands, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to this side of the table. If there's any discussion or action that somebody wants to take. Ms. Douglas, yes?
Yeah, I'll move a site plan approval with the standard contingencies, one through four.
Motion by Ms. Douglas.
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Vara. One question for you, Mr. Twing, if they do end up running into any glitches on the transformer, that's something that you're comfortable approving administratively?
Yeah, and we've, we've got several minor modifications we can do under site plans.
Okay, excellent. Any comments, any other questions? Not seeing any, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All set? That was quick and painless. Now, we are on to sign variances. Our first item of other business is item E1, which is a sign variance 160907, a sign variance request to install wall signs on the southwest front facade of an automobile dealership, Jeep Village, located at 31200 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing.
Basically, you have two items in front of you. The Village Jeep is applied for a sign permit. The facility, the dealership is in sign area two. In sign area two, there are two provisions that they're asking for relief from. One of those is a requirement that only allows one wall sign per facade, and the second is that all signs can't exceed 100 square feet on that facade. Petitioner is proposing a total of four wall signs, and the total of all four wall signs is 133.4 square feet. Details of each of the signs is, should be included in your, or have access in your packet. That's the request.
Any questions for Mr. Twing?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Tim, refresh my memory, has this been in front of us for other signs in the past? It seems to me this...
Well, it wasn't that long ago they were in front of us for the...
For a site plan approval.
Site plan approval, and then you, then you also added sign appeal at a different dealership.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see the petitioner is ready, so...
Yes, good evening, I am Tim Heilmann from Heilmann Sign Company, 4797 Grashit, St. Clair, Michigan. And, yes, we're requesting the extra signs, and looking at our package here, the service sign on the canopy is there to direct the people where to take their cars when they're coming off Woodward. So, it's, you know, it's just there as a, letting them know where to go when they pull up to the dealership. And also, too, with the dealership, it's unusual for most car dealerships, because he doesn't have a large car lot where he's got cars that people can see as they're going by. He's got a building, and he's got the parking garage, so we're trying to get the word Jeep up there, that people know where, what he is doing there. He's back in business again after Chrysler illegally took his dealership from him. And he's just trying to get the people out there to know that, yes, he's back here and what he is selling.
Simple and easy. Any questions for the petitioner? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know if you know the answer to this, when this came for a site plan, why were the signs not part of that?
That, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Ellison?
I'm looking at, I'm assuming the elevation I'm looking at is the, is the one facing Woodward?
Yes.
Where we've got the new archway, and it says Village, and then it says Jeep Jeep.
Yep.
Just, I'm struck by the fact that we have Jeep twice, it almost becomes...
That, it's trying to make the building look symmetrical. Also, too, depending on how you're coming down Woodward, that tower will block your view for a bit on the word Jeep.
So, but this is the actual placement, and so, I'm assuming that what we're looking at here is, is the south end of the building, is that correct?
That is on Woodward, yes.
And so, farther north, you have, where, over the park, over the parking deck, you'll have no signage up there.
Right, no signage at all, just what's on the site plan there.
Okay, Mr. Goddick.
Isn't there an existing sign of electronic variety on the side right now that I see flashing?
There's a pole sign there, and that is gonna be removed and put up with a new Chrysler sign that meets the criteria for the sign ordinance.
And that's not depicted in any of your drawings where that is?
Well, it's, I'm assuming, based on what he said, it's where the existing electronic sign is.
On the corner of the lot.
Do you know that the requirements at Chrysler, is that a, just a logo and a backlit sign, is it electronic in any format, where you can have varying messages?
No, it's strictly the Chrysler standard sign, pole sign that says, it'll be saying Jeep on it.
I like it. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Goddick's happy. Ms. Douglas.
No, I'm sorry, okay. No, no, as if, I'm still chuckling, it says, you know, I'm an old guy, and I remember the Popeye cartoons, and there was a little character called the Jeep, he used to go Jeep.
Oh, yeah, Jeep Jeep.
That's what I keep saying here, Jeep Jeep.
Ms. Douglas.
So, how big are the signs? How big is Village and how big is Jeep Jeep?
Village, Village is 30 inches tall by 12 feet 8 inches long, and, well, then you count the G hanging down, that's where we end up with extra footage, because that makes it 38 inches.
Oh.
And Jeep is 33 inches tall, 8 feet 5 and 3/8 inches long.
I got it.
Any other questions? Sir, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat real quickly, just so I can open up public comment, see if anybody wants to speak on this issue. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Not seeing anybody, I will go ahead and close that and bring it back to this side of the table.
Yep, yep, yep.
Mayor Ellison?
I'll move the variance, variances as requested.
Motion by Mayor Ellison?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Chase. Mayor Ellison?
Again, as I said, when we approve the site plan, I think we need to celebrate the fact that Village is coming back. And, and the fact that they're gonna eliminate the electronic sign is a definite positive. And, again, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to, to help you reboot.
Appreciate it, yeah. Ms. Douglas.
I'm just, you know, wondering why the, above the arch, you know, the sign couldn't say Village Jeep, which, to me, tells a story better than Village by itself and Jeep Jeep. The MOPAR sign, I, to me, is wayfinding. I don't have a problem with that, but, you know, we look at a sign ordinance, the sign ordinance is written the way it's written for a reason. I'm sitting here trying to do math to figure out what Village Jeep above the arch would, how, you know, big that would be, but it looks like it would fit, and I guess that would, you know, consistent with our sign ordinance, that would be my preference.
Out of curiosity, is that a lit archway, or is it a solid archway? I know some, some dealerships go with backlighting on those now.
No, solid archway with just sub-directional light shining down to the door.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Well, I don't think this is really too terribly different than the sign package that we approved not all that long ago for a competing dealer, maybe a mile and a half south of here, and given the size of the building itself, I think these signs are appropriate and proportional, and I have no issue with that. Any other comments? Not seeing any, I will...
Can I ask, is the variance contingent upon removing the pole sign, the electronic one? Because he offered, they're going to, but...
Well, there's already an application in for the new sign.
Has it been approved? Okay, but, again, I...
I have no, I'll add that contingency on there, it was stated that they're gonna do it, so...
Yeah, you know, assuming it's, it's in and it meets the criteria, then there shouldn't be a problem.
And that's okay with the supporter?
Support.
Okay. All right, that being said, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
You want to know? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that moves us on to item E2, which is also a sign variance 160908, sign variance request to install a freestanding sign for a bank, Huntington Bank, located at 4605 Crooks Road. Mr. Twing.
This site is located in sign area four. As you indicated, the petitioner is asking to install a freestanding sign. Sign area four does not allow freestanding signs. The petitioner's proposed sign is 12 feet in height and some 36 square feet in area. It also has a 10-foot setback from the property lines along both, both streets or property lines. As I indicated, sign area four does not allow freestanding signs, so that's really the variance in front of you. We did indicate the comparisons to the other sign areas, sign area two and sign area one, which do allow freestanding signs of different heights and sizes for reference and background if you so choose.
Any questions for Mr. Twing at this point? Not seeing any? Please, the floor is...
I have a question from Gardner Sign. And our sign proposal is the 12-foot height pylon sign that measures three foot in width on the south side of the building. There would, the south side of that building has a drive-through ATM canopy, so when you're driving north on Crooks, there's no place to put a sign on that south elevation. We have permitted and received approval for a sign facing Crooks Road and on the north side of the building. And, so, we're asking for a pylon sign for identification on the south end of this side.
Can I ask you here, Mayor Ellison?
Yeah, just quick questions. Is this proposed sign a typical Huntington Bank sign?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, can you...
Hold on, no, it's not. I was just gonna call if Tim is Vara, then I'll go to you.
No, I was just actually passing Huntington Bank on the way home today, and south is the exact sign in front of another bank right on Big Beaver, and it is, it looks appropriate to me for the bank, that's their sign, it's their logo.
Ms. Douglas.
My, my question's been answered. I was trying to figure out where it was, because I, but now I know.
Mr. Chase?
This is not lit, this is just a...
No, it will be illuminated.
It will be illuminated?
Yes, the Huntington is, the Huntington and the logo on top, and then the green band that runs down the side.
Okay.
It is a push-through type of lettering.
It's a backlighting, I'm assuming.
Well, it's, it's push-through, the letters will light up.
Okay, but the light is, light is inside the structure, shining out, it's not outside light shining out, okay.
Yes, LED.
Mr. Goddick?
I can't tell from any of the drawings that I peeked at, but the only concern I had was, like, seeing around it, is there a driveway that goes to where, if I'm pulling around the sign, it's gonna be located, or a sidewalk where it creates an issue with sight?
No, it's back 10 feet from the sidewalk. The view that I've got on the screen shows its placement.
Okay.
It's 10 feet back from each of the sidewalks, the driveways to the north, so it does meet the site clearance requirement.
Thank you.
I guess my only question, Huntington Bank does not have a more rectangular monument sort of shape sign versus a pylon sign, or is this just...
They do have a low-profile monument sign, five foot, various sizes.
Yeah, I mean, because just speaking for myself, I mean, the sign location itself really doesn't give me any pause. I think I would be a lot more comfortable, you know, from a study standpoint, with a more monument-style sign, but I'm only one of seven votes, so we'll see what happens there, I guess. Any other comments for the petitioner at this point? And I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, ma'am, for a moment, if you don't mind, and open up public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this issue? All right, not seeing anybody, I will close public comment, bring it back to this side of the table, Ms. Vara.
I'd like to make a motion to approve sign variance SV 16-0908, to request to install freestanding sign for Huntington Bank.
We have a motion by Ms. Vara?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Chase. Any additional discussion on this motion?
I just want to say that, I mean, the wayfinding, I mean, here we have a clear example of a need for wayfinding. I mean, the, which side is that? That side of the building just does not accommodate a sign that would be useful to, you know, people driving down Crooks, trying to find this place, and I think, I mean, even though this is a sign variance, it's there for the right purpose, and so I'll be supporting the motion.
And I absolutely agree that a sign is appropriate in this location. I think, for the most part, when this body has granted variances for signs, we have really gone in a monument-style direction. I can't think of a single other instance where we have approved a pylon-style sign, and while I have no issue with the sign being there itself, I'm not comfortable with a pylon sign, so...
How about if we call it a tall monument sign?
Tall skinny.
Tall skinny monument.
It's like the Washington monument.
Yes, ma'am.
Normally, I would agree with, with the chairman, but I did, again, pass Huntington Bank today. It was a nice-looking building, a great-looking sign, obvious to Huntington Bank, so that's why I made the motion, it seems really appropriate to me.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not suggesting for a second that it's tacky or in poor taste, and I just think the, the shape of it, you know...
He's being polite.
But whatever. It's me being me, exactly. All right, so without any other discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Thank you. Cut up here. All right, so that cleans us up on sign variances and moves us to potential zoning ordinance text amendments, Balkan area standards for a portion of the Forest Heights subdivision.
Can I actually suggest the planning commission go into the work session since there are people waiting for those two items?
Absolutely.
And this item is really a staff driven.
Okay.
We can always come back for that.
It's five minutes to...
I guess you should ask if there's anybody here on that item, but we didn't provide notice.
Okay, so is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Doesn't look like it, so I think we're safe. All right, so let's just push that to the back and then in the city of Southfield Master Plan, we can talk about that later as well. So let's go back into the work session, which is, the first one is item may have proposed redevelopment of the shopping center, Northwood Plaza, that we were just discussing a short while ago, and multiple family dwelling units, built court apartments. Mr. Twing?
I'm going to simply turn over this presentation to the petitioner. It's their request for a work session to get your input.
Okay, are we going to the work session back there?
Oh, we can. We can advantage of that at the table, so.
It's not taped.
We do have additional plans back there, though, that I don't have here, that I can access.
My suggestion is go back there.
Okay. Do we need to adjourn this meeting?
Yep.
All right. Yeah, I'll recess this so we can move to item 309 for the work session and then we will reconvene that at the conclusion. Are we going to do both work sessions back there, Mr. Twing?
Yes.
All right, so that will include the billings proposal when we get to that time.
On Webster, four lots on Vincetta.
And now they're doing, or they're proposing four lots that go completely through?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yes.
They met the width requirement. They actually jogged them at the front in order to get the width requirement. So they're not totally parallel with each other. But anyways, we looked at front yard setbacks and a host of things that are in the report. Basically, what staff's looking for is a couple of options. Whether you want us to create a new zoning district for this neighborhood, or treat it as an overlay, and then define geographic boundaries. But the provisions are pretty much the same for either approach. We believe that the minimum lot sizes should be somewhere between 10,000 square feet and 12,000. The minimum lot depth should be somewhere between 180 and 200 feet. Right now, the standard that's out there is a 50-foot wide lot, 6,000 square feet a lot area, and 100 foot of depth. So if you meet all three of those, you can divide your lot into, you know, each lot you're dividing into two intersections.
Yeah, I think the goal is to maintain the character of the neighborhood. If the majority of properties in the neighborhood are larger than our standard...
Right.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
And that's why I say I think what we're suggesting is somewhere between 10,000 and 12,000 square feet. A different lot depth. The lot widths, though, as you see, the majority of them are clearly 50-foot wide or somewhere in that neighborhood. That's not out of character with this neighborhood. So we're not suggesting to change that. And then the last, the other item would be the front yard setback requirement. Probably this... This graphic does a pretty good job of depicting that right now, the minimum front yard setback is represented in blue, which is 25 feet. The maximum in the ordinance is 50 feet, and that's represented in red. And you can see the majority of the houses are back farther than that already in Vincetta. And as we indicated in the report, a lot of them that apply for additions along Vincetta have to go to the zoning board to expand to non-conforming use. So it impacts them negatively right now under the current standard. So we're suggesting a change in that from potentially a minimum of 50 feet and a max of 100, I think. Isn't that what we said, 100?
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyways, this is for discussion and then whether you agree with where we're heading and then which approach, I think, is what we're looking for. If you're comfortable with that, we can either set it up for a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting, or if you'd prefer, we can invite residents of this area to come to a meeting with you and talk about it before you actually schedule a public hearing. So we're looking for input on where you want us to go.
Who wants to go first, Ms. Douglas?
Why have a maximum setback at all?
So you don't get rear yard, rear lot houses. A lot of, some of these houses get built. You know, when you've got a long, narrow lot, they get pushed way back and...
Well, but you could set a rear yard setback.
Sure, but you could meet that. We've got, we've got some lots that are 200 feet deep. So if you meet the 35-foot rear yard and you build out from there, you might be 170 feet back. Looking at, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that was a concept line.
Based on your comment.
Well, go ahead, so long as I can ask my next question.
Yeah, no, I just, as an example, I'm looking at 2917, which is on the map there. The setbacks, the houses are all aligned, but it's got a huge front yard.
Is that, is that larger than the 100-foot maximum? Do we know?
I mean, would that, would that affect this?
Certainly looks like it might be.
So we have those certain circumstances where that maximum may...
Well, if you don't want a maximum, that's fine, too, but I mean...
He's always a matter of fact, by the way. You don't want that, it's fine. We can do something else.
Well, it is an ordnance, I mean, it's, you can, this is yours to propose. It's...
Yeah.
You're not going to write, but you're not going to write every ordnance, any ordinance to address everybody's in particular situation. It's kind of what do you want to accomplish? Where do you want to go? And then you're going to have homes that we may create nonconformity on, or we may prohibit some from adding on. The majority of these right now are nonconforming, so every time they do something, they have to...
Because of their, the depth of their, that's very deep?
Yes.
Because they're past the 50 feet.
They're back farther.
Right, yeah. So if we did this, either by a zoning amendment, or zoning, zoning or an overlay, there are buildings that do then encro, and if we went with the, you know, minimum 50-foot maximum, whatever, setback, there are buildings that do encroach into that 50 feet. Would they then become nonconforming and be, need variances to do stuff?
It's possible, yes. But yes, if they were in front of it, they would be nonconforming. I think we were just trying to, to... Part of the concern, I think, with the four lots that are being created is that they will be able to build new houses in front of the other houses next door to them.
Well, and in fact, they still could.
Right. Right now, they could, yes.
Yeah, well, but even with this, I mean, the difference of 20, between 25 and 50 is still going to push those facades, you know, pretty close to the street compared to the others. There are a few lots in this area that are shorter than, what did you say, between 180, 180?
And 200.
How would this affect them?
Well, you could potentially leave those out. And that's why, from a geographic standpoint, you could put the overlay on the other properties. You could leave some of these out. You don't have to include, you don't have to include this entire neighborhood in the overlay.
Ah. So, and that leads to my next question. What's the difference between, what are the comparative advantages of rezoning versus an overlay?
I don't know that I have a particular reason to do one over the other. The rezoning, the overlay would be part of the existing district. We would, we've used overlays in the past. A lot of the neighborhoods around the central business district have overlays on them for different reasons, but...
Does one have more teeth than the other if a developer should decide he wants to...
Um...
No, I don't, I don't...
You think you'd have to amend the ordinance, you'd have to amend the ordinance either to rezone it? Or you'd have to amend the ordinance to expand or remove the overlay?
Yeah, well, they both, none has more teeth than the other. They both involve, you know, new regulations being put into the ordinance text. They both involve changes to, you know, the boundaries on the zoning map. There's really not much of a difference. You know, one may be, you know, somewhat easier to administer, like an overlay district, but from the outside, it may be a little more difficult because then you need to look up both the underlying zoning district regulations and the overlay district, where if it's in one district, everything's there in one place for you to look up under the section that relates to that district.
It might be clearer if you rezoned it. If a property owner or a potential buyer was looking at this and the map showed it as, you know, one family Vincetta zoning, it would be much clearer than an overlay that said one family and had some overlay on it. There might be less confusion on their end. But process-wise, you know, you'd have to amend the ordinance in either case to change it.
And I do like the idea of meeting first with residents of this neighborhood before we do a public hearing.
Let me go in order here because I know Mr. Goddick's been waiting, then over to Ms. Vara, then to Ms. Black.
This is being written to have it applied to only lots of a certain size. You know, the neighborhood I live in wouldn't be affected by this, would it?
No.
Because I'm only at 50 by 135. So this comes into play when you hit 180 feet deep? When does this apply?
Well, depending on where you wanted to go with it, I think we would go back and identify the lots that are contiguous in this study area. And those are the ones we would bring back to you to include in that district. Any that didn't comply, I don't think we'd attempt to make those nonconforming.
So this is, you want to target a specific area with this only?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is like what they call spot zoning?
No, I mean, we have overlays, we have other districts, we have large lot zoning. And that's why I say I want it to be contiguous and include the majority of lots. And I'm going to say most of them are probably going to be along Vincetta Boulevard. The others probably are not. But we would not pick two lots together and then pick two more down the street. We're going to...
If this makes sense for this sub, why doesn't it make sense for other subs?
Other subs aren't, just don't have the same characteristics of it. You don't have the, you don't have the setbacks on the homes, you don't have the lot depths.
I guess I'd be more inclined to look at something like this when you could say, if, if a lot is 180 feet or 200 feet deep, then something like this applies citywide, not just a particular sub.
Well, you can't just, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't put it in there so that it's this lot in that end of town. And, I mean, there's no reason to prohibit land divisions from occurring throughout the community. That wasn't the direction we were given.
Okay.
Ms. Vara?
Tim, so the, we'd be looking at the 50-foot setback, correct? Did you just put the 25 in there as, as an example of what, like a stream?
This depiction shows what we currently have. And the blue is what the ordinance in one family allows as a minimum, is 25 feet. The red is depicting what 50 feet would be. That's the current ordinance for one-family residential. You've got a minimum of 25 or the average of the properties adjacent to you.
Okay.
And the max is 50. That's what the current ordinance says.
Okay, a couple more questions. I'm with Shar on this. I can, I think we need to hear from the residents. But before we do, I want to make sure that this is all clear in our minds so we can, you know, listen intelligently to some of their concerns. And then finally, because we're looking at this subdivision only for this particular new zoning, what if another, well, let me back up. Have you looked at any other areas in, in Royal Oak that would, that this may happen? Maybe the Hendry area, I'm not sure what the name of that sub is. Because that's, those are big lots and big homes over there, too.
We haven't looked at any others specifically. I know when the current ordinance was written, the consultant and staff looked at the neighborhoods to come up with the current ordinance. That's how Large Lot Residential came about. In that zoning district, the minimum width is 70 feet. And I believe it's 16,000 square feet a lot area. And so there were several neighborhoods that were put in Large Lot Residential. Those are in different parts of the town. So it was studied back in 2001 when that, that district was created. This is a little different. We didn't, we haven't really studied lots that are 50 feet wide and real deep. There might be some over, what, west of Beaumont?
There's, well, there's some over west of Beaumont that are, have exceedingly deep lots. There's also another area just to the east of this, across Main and Rochester, that also has lots that are upwards of 200 feet and more deep.
The west side of Harvard is close to 300 feet because there's supposed to be a street that went between Harvard and whatever the next street is.
The issue we have here that, that isn't in that other area is some of these deep lots we have here on Vincetta are basically through lots.
To the street.
Back up to Webster, so there's a greater pressure on those to be divided because someone sees them and thinks, aha, I can get two lots, one fronting on Webster, one fronting on Vincetta. That other area, they don't have that possibility because the back of their lots back up to other lots. There's no street running behind. So there's no, yeah, the only way they could divide it would be dividing it in two down the middle, dividing the width in half. And most of them are already at or near what the minimum lot width would be, so there's no pressure on them to divide those properties.
One more comment, I just want to reiterate that the mayor made a comment earlier. The purpose of this exercise and doing this is to preserve the integrity of this neighborhood as it stands today. Is that correct?
Scotty, yeah.
Okay.
So who was next? I think Ms. Black had a comment.
Yeah, you asked if we knew the background on it, and I've heard just a little bit about it. And just out of curiosity, maybe you already answered it, I'm not sure. Are the, are the four lots already happening?
Yes.
No matter what?
Yes.
The neighborhood's not fighting it in court, or is that...
I thought it was in court.
They're litigating on a deed restriction.
But this won't, this won't affect that?
The neighbors are fighting it on a deed restriction basis, not zoning. The zoning passed muster. We got through, they weren't happy about it, but they can't, we followed the rules. The guy got what he can. But they're fighting them again on deed restrictions, which is something that's got to be done at civil court.
So did that four lot then go before zoning board or permission?
No, it's an administrative function. If you comply with a land division, it's signed off on and sent to the county.
The planning department had to, had to do this?
Yes.
Is there a count on, by instituting the 50-foot setback, is there a count on how many houses in this area would be then nonconforming so that nobody could renovate their property? And they'd all have to go to zoning board because that's not fine?
Don't have an exact number yet, but we're looking at it. But from what we see now, we'd be relieving more houses of nonconforming status than...
Okay, so we're making it better, or we're not making it worse?
Correct. Because a lot of them right now can't, as you saw in that one picture, so many of them are even behind the 50-foot. They're nonconforming, they can't do anything to their property without coming before ZBA. So we're trying to arrange it to where that setback is more fitting for them. So there's, they're able to do some additions without having to seek a variance. This is all on the south side of the line, pretty much lined up with what was there. Whereas on the north, yeah, there were some properties where the houses are setback quite far. And it isn't going to help them very much, but there's, I don't think we've identified a significant number of ones that are going to be, that are already in front or near that blue line that are going to be made nonconforming. Because there haven't been that many new houses constructed in this area. It's been mostly just additions.
Which is why I'm asking, the point is, are we making it easier or making it harder for someone to renovate their property? Because there are no new houses going up on Vincetta. And if someone wants to add on, they've got to go to zoning board.
You could also just eliminate it and say that setbacks, front yard setbacks, got to be the average of the two houses on either side.
Yeah.
I like that better than, just because of the geography of the street, I mean, you're kind of...
I mean, there's a lot of ways to look at it and get to it. We could look at it in another fashion, but...
I like that idea.
I like that better.
It, it will make it difficult on some, though. I mean, it's still going to create some nonconforming houses, but then you're at least looking what's on either side of the house. It wouldn't, you, I guess the question would be at that point, that would be the minimum. They couldn't come closer. Would you let them go farther back? And that's kind of the...
Now, is it possible, and I'm not quite sure how I want to phrase this question, but somebody in this, we make these changes, somebody gets negatively impacted, they want to do renovations to their home. Is it possible that when they go to approach the ZBA, that the write-up would be that these people are now having this hardship because of an action that was taken by the planning commission and it is not a hardship that they created upon themselves? So the zoning board knows going into it that, you know, the people didn't do anything to create the problem that they're now having, we gave it to them?
They're already going to have that argument.
Yeah.
And they're already going to have that argument.
That's essentially what people have been arguing to the ZBA for the last few years on the street is, you know, the city created this problem for us by putting these standards in place in our neighborhood that, you know, by having a 50, or 25-foot minimum and 50-foot maximum front yard setback, you made our properties nonconforming. Because apparently, they weren't at one point allowed because they were, you know, those houses were built with those setbacks at some point. So, I mean, that's, they are, they're already making that argument, I should say.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The drawings that you showed us with the blue current setbacks and the red proposed setbacks don't, are only just a small portion of the neighborhood that we've outlined in dotted red lines here. Does that, and it's, and they're along Vincetta. Would this zoning, are we saying that the zoning ordinance would apply to this whole outlined red area or what, or a portion thereof?
No, I think we would, I don't think whatever we write, however we approach it, it's going to apply to that entire area. The entire area is just what we kind of looked at to try and come up with it. I don't think the others are impacted by that standard, but we'll look at it again. I think mostly the setback issue is along Vincetta, those homes that front Vincetta. The other ones, I don't believe that's going to be true, so... And then the neighbors, I mean, when you, when you have this meeting, whether it's part of the public hearing or the neighborhood invite, we'll get some input because, yes, that'll be the question. Are you going to make my situation worse? I'm going to say the majority of the time, I don't believe so. I think we're going to make it better, or we won't impact it at all. You'll still be nonconforming.
In fact, the two options we provided, the way they were written, the, only though, the depth and the area requirements would apply to all lots within whatever area we draw the boundaries. The front yard setback issue was specifically written to apply only to those within that area that front on Vincetta. Because that's the only one we saw where there was an issue with the front yard setback. Everywhere else within that neighborhood, there's no issue with the front yard setbacks. They're all pretty consistent.
See in Magnolia here, it's this portion.
I would probably be more in favor of the average of the two houses next to you.
Well, Tim, what do you want from us tonight specifically?
Just, I guess, the approach. If you'd rather have a neighborhood meeting before we set this for a public hearing, we will go back and, as long as you think we're taking the right approach on it, we'll invite, you know, we'll send a notice out and invite them to come to some meeting. Now, I would suggest that maybe, I don't know if you want us to do it as a special meeting or as part of a, beginning of a planning commission meeting?
I mean, wouldn't, so by that, are we saying, hey, residents, what would you prefer? And then we vote to try and curb them?
We're going to tell them where you're, where we're headed, get their input and feedback, and based on that, make some modifications or go forward with what's being proposed.
Will there be an education pamphlet for them ahead of time so they can...
Basically send them this report or...
Yeah, plus, and they're insanely organized, insanely well-informed. And they have a spokesperson that is really top-notch. I mean, they've got their act together.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I was actually at the meeting where they attended, but...
Going to get 200 residents and they're all going to have five minutes to speak?
Right.
You know, that's, that's a good point, Tim. I mean, can you work it out where we have a spokesperson so it doesn't turn into a four-hour circus?
I mean, I, I think that I would like to welcome their comments under one or two people. They should come to that person first, and then that person can filter out because it...
My, my only concern with that is who's, I mean, how you limit and whether people all agree with public comment. If they, I think we can make that contact and say, I think we can say that that's what we'd prefer, but if we're going to give notice, I'm going to give notice to everyone that's on this...
That's fine, I understand.
If somebody wants to speak.
It's going to be open public comment.
I understand. But if they're as highly organized as you claim...
Yeah, I would say you would approach him first and say, this is what we're thinking. And then ask how, do you think we should approach your neighborhood?
I mean, everyone deserves a right to speak, however, every resident would cut it down. That would take a day.
And we deserve the right to sleep at some point, too, so...
That would take a day.
Okay, well, unless there's something in particular, I don't, I think as long as you're comfortable with our approach.
Anybody have issues or...
I like the idea of maybe having it before a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting from like six to seven and put a time limit on it. And that way, then they, they know they've got to be organized and they can come in and they have an hour, and, I mean, that's just one idea.
Is there any value, Tim, in meeting with them administratively first?
I can meet with the neighborhood representative that we've been involved with, but again, I don't want that to be the only party that...
No, I know, I mean, I don't mean in lieu of this, but meeting with him ahead of time so that he's got a better understanding of where we're trying to go.
Certainly, be happy to do that.
Sort of like, yeah, sort of like the meeting we had tonight on these two projects. And then finally get to us, everybody's got a better understanding.
Shar, did I see your hand?
Yeah, maybe appoint a committee, like, you know, three of us to go with Tim and meet informally with them, you know, not here, not at this table. And then certainly, I mean, a public hearing.
It's a very good, very good idea.
Well, I'll schedule a meeting and then invite whoever wants to come. Now, it can't have a quorum.
Can't have a quorum.
But if you're interested, you want to come, we'll go that route.
Pick your favorite, three.
I'm not picking, I'm going to say who wants to. Limit first three to reply.
Fair enough.
Pick Shar, pick Shar.
Believe it or not, I'd actually like to attend.
We'll pull AJ out of class and he'll handle it.
I need my chair.
All right, so you got...
Congratulations.
All right, so we will close that item out. Then we have a City of Southfield master plan. Anything, just for info?
Good for them.
Before I call for adjournment, I was actually going to raise a point based on us moving our start, start time from 7:30 to 7:00, which meant that we had a brownfield meeting that started at 6:30. And I actually found it extraordinarily tough to get here at 6:30. I was wondering what people's thoughts were on just saying we have a 7 o'clock start time, regardless of what's on the agenda.
If we didn't start till 7:00, we'd still be here.
I like the transition change. I like it at 7:00. We only have one or two brownfields a year.
I think it's going to start kicking up, and there's, yeah, I think, from the development side, I think we're...
Could put the brownfield at the end, and not put them at the beginning.
Just some thoughts, so whatever. If you want to keep it the way it is, then it is the way it is.
Be careful what you wish for.
I do have one other item, though. Planning Commission last month asked about the first floor retail in the CBD.
Oh, yeah.
The DDA has met, we've given them some options and drafts options. It's one of, it's at one of their committees. It's called their Business Marketing Committee. The thought process was if there's members of the planning commission who would like to attend their next meeting, they'd like to have, you know, two or three of you come and go over it, see what their ideas are and see what you're supportive of, and then, and then bring that forward.
You mean first floor office?
You mean first floor? I mean, what you were doing was limiting it to retail on the first floor in certain areas. That's why I said first floor retail was in the CBD.
When's their, when's that meeting going to be?
I haven't scheduled it yet. They just met. If you're interested, I'd include you in the next meeting, so...
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, copies on the...
Again, I can't have a quorum, but is there three of you that want to attend, or...
Well, I, since I've started this, I definitely want to stay in.
Shar and Dan.
They're four o'clock meetings, right?
You already...
No, they're normally at 5:00, 5:30.
So if you've got Shar and Dan, who wants to be the third?
I'll go.
Okay, so there we go, we got three people.
Sounds good.
Argued that real estate is retail.
I need a mystery motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Vara, supported by Ms. Black. I saw her hand before you spoke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.